Number two, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda item number three is Rules of Order. Yeltsworth City Council follows Robert's Rules of Order, except for those items that were changed or edited at our organizational meeting that is held every November after the election. Item number four, Adoption of the Yeltsworth City Council Minutes from the following meeting, June 17th, 2024, regular meeting minutes, June 26th, 2024, special meeting. Move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Item number five, City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Chair Beal. I will try to speak slower and with less Oz. I received an anonymous letter recently, very nice person, saying that I have a little too many Oz and I go back and forth into the microphone. So I'm going to try and limit that a bit. And maybe a reminder to everybody else to do that when you're speaking, to get close to the microphone. We do have a lot of people that listen and watch online. So we'll start with staffing. The new promotions, I'll talk a little bit later for our Social Services Director, City Clerk and Public Works Director. But I have a few things to say about them, but I can maybe wait until the later in the agenda for that. The Police Chief, we are in the second round of in-person interviews for that role. There's two extremely qualified excellent candidates. It's going to be a very difficult decision, but we're finalizing that interview process this week. And the committee is going to meet up later next week to make a recommendation for council. I know we're doing kind of an expanded in-person interview process with council members on this round. So we'll take a breather after the final in-person round and then get a recommendation over here. It's taken a little longer than I had hoped, but it's such an important piece for the city that really wanted to make sure we did the process right on this one and really excited about our final two candidates. So that is it for that. The new hires, as approved by the budget process, have been posted for General Assistant Specialist, Code Enforcement Administrator. And there was one more in there that I cannot remember at the moment, but...
HR.
The HR Specialist that was in there. Oh, the one of them's an internal hire, so that's not being posted. There's, you know, now we're kind of, we've passed the budget. I think one of the big things that we're switching towards is an infrastructure plan, which has also been sort of left unattended to you for the past few years, a one, five and 10-year infrastructure plan. Really excited to get involved in this, you know, with the ban, bond cycles, future taxes, the Bipartisan Infrastructure Act, the Inflation Reduction Act, Maine Department of Transportation, U.S. Department of Transportation. You know, there is just such a wealth of sources of funding that can be aligned to a lot of our huge projects. So we'll obviously have a lot of public input on that, but we are laser focused on that. We're going to start with roads and those pieces so that the city council and the public have a good plan of what our infrastructure needs are and how we're going to meet them in the coming years. We're going to be, also for those that are interested, election papers are now available at City Hall. If you'd like to fill those out and run for City Council, it's a great, great team. And we're really looking forward to having some good candidates here in Elsworth. So if you're interested, please stop by City Hall to fill out some papers. Oh, the 26th, sorry. Sorry, they'll be available on the 26th. The water treatment plant replacement processes are still underway. We're looking to have a late August public workshop at the existing water treatment plant that I hope city councilors and members of the public and anybody else interested can attend to get our latest on our plans for those replacements. We received a million-dollar Northern Borders grant that's hopefully offset some of the cost of that. We continue to look for additional grant funding to minimize the impact on the taxpayer of that really important project. But more information to come in August. High Street upgrades, there's the new road that's going to be paved over where it's been, the bin has been awarded. We're still waiting to hear back on if it's going to be as expected this fall or late summer for that to be replaced. Or there's also rumor that it may be towards the spring, depending on the contractor's availability. But we don't have a finalization of that. I know citizens here, and myself included, who travel through Elsworth, that's going to be a big project. It's supposed to be during the night, but there could be some daytime components. So we really want to make sure that we have the proper notification so everybody knows what's going on there. Also, a quick shout out to the Frenchman Bay Conservancy. We have one member here with us. They've been a real help on a variety of projects that are ongoing. I'm really looking forward to learning more through their Economic Impact Study of the Union River, which is being done in association with the Heart of Elsworth, the Union Salmon Association, the Downey Salmon Federation, the Chamber of Commerce. The, there's been, going to be some public participation workshops scheduled for the fall, and dates and times will be coming soon. And there'll be a final report in January of 2025. We're also working on some riverwalk potential projects, which we're going to be going to Belfast to sort of see how they enacted their project, maybe even over to Bucksport, who's also had a similar riverwalk. I think I cleaned out my office of three city managers worth of files. And as I've shared with some of you, I found three waterfront redevelopment plans. Going back to the 90s, the 2000s, and I've joked, what will my failed waterfront redevelopment plan be or ours? And, but I don't want it to fail. I think the riverwalk is one great component of that that I think will be, could be a real game changer to connect our waterfront to our downtown area. So really excited to work with Frenchman Bay and others on the feasibility of that and presenting some maybe plans to council in the coming months ahead. Also, just in the Frenchman Bay, I kind of find them everywhere. I was talking to HUD about approving their five-year housing plan, and they had mentioned that Frenchman Bay had reached out about the property that they have and some potential housing plans on that. So it's just, I think, one of the things when I originally interviewed here, I thought was so special about this place is that just really extensive nonprofit network that cares about this area and this region. And Frenchman Bay is really just doing incredible work. So last notification is courthouse update. We are going to be holding a workshop here at City Hall on July 30th at 6:00 p.m. So be, stay tuned for some more details on that. We're also arranging a meeting with the state judiciary on the courthouse and the people that are involved in that from their end, with the city planner, myself, and a few city councilors, hoping to have that meeting concluded before the workshop meeting so that we can give kind of an update to the citizens on where we're at between us and the state. We've been gathering concerns and feedback and really want to make sure that this is the right place for Elsworth and the upgrade here and that due diligence has been done. And, you know, I think we're going to be going to hear more and express some of the consolidated concerns we've heard from citizens. And we'll definitely be reporting back at the workshop meeting on July 30th. And that is it for me.
Any questions for the city manager? Okay. Item number six, Presentation of Awards. The first award is to Nathan Burkhart, 10 years of service to the city of Elsworth. The city of Elsworth proudly presents the certificate of service to Nathan Burkhart.
Burkhart. Yeah, yeah, you're right.
Sorry. 10 years of service as the Assistant Systems Administrator for the city of Elsworth. Your devotion to duty and loyalty to the community and contribute to the improvement of the city of Elsworth. Thank you. So the next award goes to, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven people. And I think our interim police chief is going to start out.
So on May 20th, Corporal Mote and Officer Bagley responded to a report of a motor vehicle accident with personal injury, which occurred on Kingland Cross in Elsworth. Upon arrival, Corporal Mote observed Officer Bagley retrieving a window popper from his patrol car. As a supervisor on scene, Corporal Mote directed and assisted Officer Bagley with gaining entry into the vehicle by breaking the rear side window behind the operator. This allowed access to the unresponsive operator. Corporal Mote determined through his initial assessment, the operator did not have a pulse. Corporal Mote, Officer Bagley removed the operator from the vehicle. Corporal Mote began CPR. Officer Bagley, while gaining access to the vehicle, received a significant cut to his hand from breaking the window. However, Officer Bagley continued to assist by communicating updates to dispatch and requesting assistance from EMS. A short time later, Brandon Ugley, a firefighter with the Hancock Fire, Hancock and Bar Harbor Fire Department, arrived with an AED, an assisted corporal moat in the Elsworth Fire Department, arrived a couple of minutes later. It took over chest compressions. Ultimately, the operator regained pulse and consciousness. The operator, Richard "Bob" Anderson, was taken to the hospital for treatment, is continuing to recover, is with us here today, sitting there front. So a medical control doctor who oversees the Elsworth Fire Department EMS passed along the following message. Nice code save, great job, great note, great assessment in recognizing this was a medical, not a traumatic arrest. Keep up the good work. Corporal Mote, Officer Bagley, members of the Elsworth Fire Department, Brandon Ugley helped save the life of Richard "Bob" Anderson that day. Although, through your abilities, professionalism, dedication to protecting and serving the citizens of Elsworth, the city of Elsworth, based on your initial assessment and subsequent actions at the accident scene, I hereby commend Corporal Mote, Officer Bagley. The two of you worked together and did so quickly, decisively, which led to the saving of a life. The selfless actions of you both reflect greatly on you, the Elsworth Police Department, the city of Elsworth, and our profession in general. I'd like to thank you both for a job well done and along with the fire department and the guys that came in and helped out. With that, I have a couple of letters of commendation for Corporal Mote and Officer Nick Bagley. If you'd like to come up. So I think Michelle from the city has got a little something from the city.
The city of Elsworth proudly presents this lifesaving award to Corporal Helen Mote and, I'm sorry. And Officer Nicholas Bagley for outstanding police performance in the saving of human life on May 20th, 2024, and the display of conspicuous initiative capability and attentive to duty thereby earning the respect and admiration for themselves and the department. Thank you very much.
Captain Kennedy, Brandon Levitt, Peter Layton. Unfortunately, Tyler Ishewit is on active orders with the military and is not present tonight.
The city of Elsworth proudly presents this unit citation award for outstanding performance in saving a human life on May 20th, 2024, and the display of conspicuous initiative capability and attentive to duty, attention to duty thereby earning the respect and admiration for yourselves and the department. Congratulations.
And then we have one more.
If we can get Mr. Ugley to come forward.
The city of Elsworth proudly presents the civilian lifesaving award to Brandon Ugley for outstanding performance in saving a human life on May 20th, 2024, in the day of conspicuous initiative capability and attention to duty thereby earning the respect and admiration for himself and the community.
Gentlemen, thank you. No more kissing.
Bye, bud.
Cheers.
All right, item number seven, Committee Reports. Okay. Yeltsworth sign?
This seems to fit best here. It's sort of an extension of the broadband committee now, sort of dispersed. But some of us recall getting an email a few weeks ago about the Graham Way area, Branch Pond area, and internet issues up there and having had Phidium potentially do some work in some areas and not some others. So I took it upon myself, after getting a couple more emails from several folks in that area that have actually formed a sort of an ad hoc coalition about their internet service, to do a little research. So thanks to Jana at Economic Development and Jason at IT, we started digging into this to see what happened. Obviously, this was not a city project at any point, getting internet out there. But we did, the city had communication with Phidium and other providers years ago. And there were some conversations that happened. There was a plan for internet to go into those areas, and that plan was later abandoned due to various issues that we're still looking into, but those were all sort of Phidium side issues. So Jana is now looking into various grants and funding opportunities to see what we can do about getting internet up at those places. It doesn't seem like anything that's moving very quickly, but apparently some, some money has become available at the state level. And they're looking into main connectivity authority to see what, what can be done. So there's not too much, but we are looking into it. So for those of you, hopefully you can, you're able to livestream this with your internet service. But if not, if you watch this later, this is us looking into it, but continue to send in questions and also thoughts and information, if you have it from that area. Again, that's Graham Way and Branch Pond Road area.
Thank you for doing that.
It's fascinating.
Any other committee reports?
Just to add for the Historic Preservation Commission, you'll remember last time we were all together, we had a presentation on the mapping of the historic, the ancient burial ground up behind the church. The meeting that was to follow that of Historic Preservation Commission was canceled, but they are meeting Wednesday afternoon. And we'll bring up the funding for the printing of that report so that it will be available for folks. And also the minutes, I wasn't satisfied with the minutes from, from that meeting in really describing what it was. So I provided some, I think, clear language on it that'll be just an addendum to those minutes that went out before. As you recall, it was a pretty spectacular volunteer effort to map what was, what is in the ancient burial grounds. And soon it'll be online and available in print copies for folks through the Historic Preservation Commission.
Anyone else? Item eight, Citizens Comments. This is the place in the meeting where citizens can come to the podium and speak on any topic that is not on the agenda. We ask that you do speak on agenda items when the agenda is brought, that item is brought up. We do ask, and we'll hold you to three minutes on your comment. Does anyone would like to speak? You come to the podium and state your name.
Yes. My name is Burish Jester, Senior. I lived in Elsworth for the last 24 years. Been up here since 1965, off and on. I have a complaint about the composting plant. You all familiar with that?
Yeah, that's an agenda item. So if you would speak at that point, that would be great. Thank you.
So I can't talk to you about that tonight? Is that what you said?
You can when the agenda item comes up. It's on the agenda for tonight's evening.
Oh, it is on the agenda.
Yes.
It's further down, to clarify. You will have your chance.
Yep, you will have a chance to speak.
Don't go anywhere.
So anyone else that would like to speak? Item, Agenda Item Number Nine, Councilor Comments. Does any councilor have something that they would like to speak on that's not on the agenda? Go on to the next. Item number 10, Public Hearing in Action on the Applications for Renewal for the Following Licenses. Maine Organic Therapy, DBA Cure Leaf Maine, 3 Myrick Street, Suite B for renewal of a medical marijuana dispensary license, including a city victueller license. Elsworth Lodge of Elks, number 2743, 317 High Street, for renewal of a city Class B license, victueller liquor and amusement, and renewal for a state club on premise with catering malt, spiritus, venus, Class One liquor license. Taste Jamaica LLC, 190 State Street, for renewal of a city Class C license, victueller and liquor, and renewal of a state restaurant, Class Three and Four, wine and malt liquor license. Melanie Omler Fox, DBA Helen's Restaurant of Elsworth, 55 Down East Highway, for renewal of a Class C, city Class C license, victueller and liquor, and renewal of a state restaurant malt, spiritus and venus, Class One, Two, Three, Four liquor license. Daniel Seapotts, DBA Lakeside Cedar Cabins, 397 Marriavel Road, for renewal of a city lodging license. So I'm going to open the public hearing and for all of these at once. So if anyone, after I open the public hearing, would like to speak. Public hearing is opened. Would anyone like to speak on any of those licenses? The public hearing is closed. Move to approve all?
Second.
Any discussion?
All the paperwork and everything is all bookworm. Thank you, the interim clerk's team for getting all these.
All in favor? Unanimous. Item number 11, Council Order Number 072400, Discussion and Possible Action Against Maine Organics for Violation of Universe of Elsworth Unified Development Ordinance and the Administrative Consent Agreement Signed on March 21st, 2024, sponsored by Councilor O'Halloran. Would you like to start?
Yeah, I'll start briefly before I send it over to Bobby or Robert, our Code Enforcement Officer. Just a clarification, as of yet, we do not have any violations of the consent agreements in place. We have had, you know, some citizen complaints that have been looked into by, by Robert and our code team on various occasions. I, I too have reviewed, reviewed the consent agreement, discussed with Robert the complaints, also toward the facility, myself to sort of see how things operate and to see how they're aligning with the consent agreement. So as of yet, we don't have any actual violations. But, you know, obviously we'll continue to monitor the situation. I did want to bring Robert in tonight to go over sort of the process for reporting violation and for monitoring it to make sure that the facility stays in compliance with the consent agreement. But, and then we can open it from there.
And if the gentleman would like to speak, I'm just, we'll have, no, 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 you're fine. We'll have you speak first, and then you can come and have your comments after. Is that okay?
Robert Grant, Code Enforcement. I submitted a memo to you, to all of you on the council detailing the total extent of the complaints that I've received since the consent agreement was signed at the end of March. It's 10 or 11 complaints, and the bulk of them came in on two different days, June 11th and June 28th. And, and to be honest, neither of those days were anything, anything that I could, could consider being a violation of the consent agreement. June 11th was a particularly smelly day, and the smell was gone before 10 o'clock in the morning. I mean, it was gone, it was gone everywhere but on the industrial road before 9 o'clock, which is, which means it's not, not a violation of the consent agreement. And on the 28th, there was persistent smell on Route 180, but nowhere else. So again, those complaints, I can't say that a persistent smell on the road is a violation because part of the consent agreement is that the property value has to be damaged. And I can't, I can't justify saying the value of the road was damaged because there's a smell on it. You're driving by, it's not, you know, the value is what you're traversing. It's not that you can smell something or not. So if you have any questions.
Yeah, if we, can we hold until Councilor O'Halloran comes back? Because I really think he should be hearing this since he sponsored this item.
Yeah, do you want me to go see?
You would, thank you. He's getting visually. So would you like to repeat for Councilor O'Halloran?
Sure.
Why there's not a...
On June 11th, we had a particularly smelly day in the morning. I received a couple of complaints before 9. One of them was right after 8 o'clock, and then one was about 8:30. And the smell was gone ever from everywhere but the industrial road before 9. And it was gone before 10 o'clock on the industrial road. On the 28th, there was a persistent smell on Route 180, the Marriavel Room. That smell persisted throughout the day, and that was the only place that it was a persistent smell. And the reason that I can't consider that a violation is because on the road, it doesn't damage the value of the road to have the smell on the road. It's not anyone's private property. Driving by, it's not, it's not damaging your ability to use the room. That, that would be why that one, even though it did smell during the day, wouldn't be a violation.
Robert, could you, for the public's sake, remind us what constitutes a violation of the consent agreement?
Yeah, sure. So there are quite a few steps before you get to that. And I'll try to think of the top of my head if I can without having to go further to my notes. They're allowed to, the Maine Organics facility is allowed to, for lack of a better term, smell from 6:00 to 8:00 a.m., Monday through Friday, where that's their active mixing time. They get a, they get a delivery of seafood compost every day, Monday through Friday. They have those two hours to mix their product and get the smell under control. And then for the violation process to begin, you need to have a consistent smell for, for at least one hour after that 6:00 to 8:00 or any other time during the day. So the most likely time for them to smell is that morning period. That's when I get the bulk of my complaints.
During the period, under the consent agreement?
Yeah, I believe I have 11, 10 or 11 complaints. Four of them came in during the time before they would be considered a nuisance odor. It has to be, from the morning, the 6:00 to 8:00 period, it has to smell after 9 o'clock off-site for it to be a violation, for you to begin the violation process. If it then, if it does smell after 9 o'clock or any other time outside that two-hour window in the morning, I then have to, I have to go to the property that is complaining of the odor, determine that the odor does exist. Then I have to go to Maine Organics and determine that the odor is the same. Then I have to go to Maine Organics and determine that the odor is the same odor I'm smelling at the other property. And then I have to give them a subjective amount of time that I determine to remedy that smell. If they do that, I usually give them an hour or so. If they do that, then the violation process stops there. If they can't get it under control, then we go further into the, into the steps, which can eventually lead to a fine, and, and at that point, it's, other measures can be taken.
Also, no, yeah, we, the reason, you know, there's no violation as of yet with the consent agreement. The, you know, I'd also say toward the facility, it's a pretty impressive, well-run operation. They, you know, they do take byproducts from Jackson Labs, as well as our seafood industry, and I think I was kind of having a misconception of sort of just how sizable the operation is in terms of its impact. There were multiple landscaping companies that arrived when I was there to pick up the composted material to, to go to the landscapers. So it also, it is located next to, you know, another construction waste transfer station and our own garbage waste transfer station in the industrial area, so. And, you know, during the times, and I, you know, we went through the protocols, I think. We talked to Steve about, they have amendments to any, and all changes to processes and procedures. It seems like they're abiding by all the processes and procedures, as we've seen, and code enforcement has checked multiple times. So as of yet, we have no violations to report.
Is there compost in that bucket?
Yeah.
Steve, that's very inappropriate.
That, that's what all the neighbors are dealing with. I wanted to make sure you got the same idea.
I understand the smell of compost. I'm going to remove that from the chambers now.
I got it.
Thank you. We could also just talk to Steve. We don't need the theatrics.
Sir, would you like to speak?
Yes, I would. As I said before, I'm not a native of Ellsworth, but I've been up here since 1965. Come up here for clean air, nice smelling air, because that's what Maine's all about, right? What you smelled here, you find it oppressive, right? How would you like to sit on your deck every morning and smell that? Not every morning, but every so often, right?
No, the point is made. We all know what compost smells like, sir.
Why was this ever approved in that area to begin with? Anybody knows that compost smells? Some smells, some smell worse than others. Why was that ever approved to be put in that? Whoever approved it, the town has to do something about it. And what they're doing right now is not much, believe me. And this has been going on for years. You haven't done anything about it. You only slowed it down.
So all the paper mill towns in Maine should have shut down?
This is not a paper mill town. I'm talking about the composting plant. You're making excuses. That's not right.
Don't engage. Thank you. Did you have anything else to say, sir?
I can't say anything more about this?
No, I just asked you if you had, I'm asking the council not to engage. If you have something further to say, please go ahead.
Yes, I would like to see a solution to this problem. You know? I don't understand why they're allowed to get away with it, because the rules are set that that smell should not go past his boundary. It's not fair to the people that work around that plant and the people that live near the area. You brought out a good point by bringing that in here. Evidently, you people have never smelled that, but I smell that every so often, my property, and I don't like it. All right? I'm not here to complain, I'm here to see something done about it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Councillors?
Any other public comments?
It's not a public hearing, so, but councillors?
So I'm Tim Stone, 30 Old Mill Road. I'll reintroduce myself again, because not everybody's been here before. So I represent, me and my two partners. We have, are putting in a 16-unit luxury treehouse place on the Union River there. The cost is going to be well over $8 million invested in Ellsworth. These are high-end units, good finishes, hot tubs, fire pits, all kinds of other things. I should say this. So when we were looking for a place to build this, we looked at over 20 properties, and we researched them for over two years, all the way to Swan's Island, on the island, all kinds of places, right? I convinced my two partners that Ellsworth is the place to do it. There's lots of options, but Ellsworth is the place that we should do this. We shouldn't try to do it on the island, there are lots of reasons to do it on the island, but that's where everybody else goes. That Ellsworth is a city that I think has lots and lots of potential. Right? It's hot again. I mean, they did well over the winter, but it's hot again. And even though it's very hard to enforce, that's another thing, the smell keeps coming through. It's been four times on our property in the last three weeks. And it might not seem like a big deal, but it's not a minor smell. It's a really, really terrible smell. It's been about six times that it's been mild. I don't care. Like, if it's a little mild smell, it doesn't bother me. But when it comes through, it's overwhelming. I mean, the people that are working there right now, you should see their responses. So the other thing I want to talk about is the consent agreement. It's almost unenforceable. If you read through all the details, they get two hours in the morning, then they get, according to the agreement, a half an hour after that, that the smell has to be there. Then the code enforcement officer has to go over there and give them time to fix the problem. Then they have to come back to my property and make sure the smell is still bad. The smell, thankfully, almost never lasts for a whole day. That's not the problem. The smell is three hours here, two hours here, three hours here, two hours here, over and over and over again. Let me be clear, this represents a substantial threat to the business that I'm running. I cannot have it. One way or the other, can't have it. I can't have people sitting in a hot tub in the evening or in the morning, drinking their coffee on vacation and smell like they're going to throw up. I can't have it once a week, I can't have it twice a month, I can't have it. It simply will destroy the business. It only takes one time for 20 minutes. That's all it takes. So, I mean, I don't know how to go through all the consent agreement details, but it is unenforceable. Try to do it.
I'm sorry, it's been three minutes. We are holding everyone to three minutes. Thank you.
I wasn't aware that this was still three minutes.
That's, that's the council's orders to make, to keep people to three minutes.
But do, I want to say one more thing, though. Go back and look at the board meetings, the planning board meetings, and go through what has been said by Maine Organics and the very careful work by the board to say, look, it can't smell bad for hours. They discussed it for hours, the odor, over and over and over again. And they were reassured over and over again that there would be little to no odor. And that is not the case.
Thank you very much. So before I go to the council, is there anyone else that would like to speak on this? Thank you. So councillors, and I'm going to ask that everyone be civil and kind to both council, the people, and the business that we're discussing. Thank you. Comments, discussion? Councillors, I'm going to have councillor Smith, well, councillor Smith, I'm going to have councillor O'Halloran go first, as he, to his agenda item. He's the sponsor, yeah.
First of all, I've sat in this seat for three years, and we're no further ahead today than we were three years ago. It looks like it came on board in 17, and when I got elected, a lot of people come after me about that. And it's something that I brought to the council's attention. And from the beginning, it, it's gotten pushback from the city and the previous council, et cetera. I'd like to say this, that I think Maine Organics has done a better job each year since this three-year discussion has been going on, since I've been here. I think that there have been concerted efforts, I think there's been improvements, and I think it's a better environment today than it was three years ago or last year, to their credit. The, the problem that I have, and incidentally, the visual aid that nobody liked, is not what these people are smelling, the neighbors. That's the finished product that doesn't have as strong of odor as when they're mixing. Okay? From day one, since I've been here, reading the ordinance, it says that you're not permitted to produce offensive odors beyond the lot lines. And for the three years that I've been here and the three years prior to me being here, they have been producing odor beyond the lot lines. And in my view, with all due respect, the city has gone out of their way to protect this behavior. And that's okay. My feeling is this, that if this violation is going to get overlooked, and we're going to make consent agreements to allow them to violate this ordinance for two hours a day or three hours a day or whatever, I would like to think that Ellsworth could become a fair city and allow everybody to violate every ordinance and give everybody a pass not to follow the rules. That's my request, that if, if we're going to put our heads in the sand and say, oh, it doesn't smell, oh, this isn't right, oh, it doesn't smell, oh, it doesn't smell, oh, it's in the highway, I didn't know they owned the highway, this, what I'm reading says beyond their lot lines. So as a cover to this whole thing, this, this consent agreement was brought forward. I voted against it because I felt that it wasn't fair to give one business allowance to violate an ordinance and not give others allowance to violate an ordinance. I don't care where we land in this, but what I do care is that it's fair across the board to everybody in the city, not just a few and not just some. Everybody. If this guy's going to get lenient and can pollute the air in within a half a mile, great. Let's let everyone violate the ordinance. Let's not, let's just some. Let's not write special contracts. If we're going to write one, we're going to write, let's write them all. I don't think what's happening here is fair. If the city of Ellsworth wants to stick their head in the sand on this issue, my request is you stick it in the sand on all of the code issues. Somebody cuts three branches on Branch Pond, and everyone's all upset. But you can't breathe at those, going by 180, that seems to be fine. And that's apparently where the city wants to be. My simple request is this, allow everybody violations, not just some. Thank you.
Councillor Smith? I have a different perspective on this. Let me learn from what we've been doing and use the mic. I want to focus on, my understanding of the issue is, we have a consent agreement that we intended, when we voted for it, it was to strike that balance between the interests of Maine Organics and the others. And that was, the intention was to address the issue in a way that was reasonable and supported different kinds of businesses and also the residents in the area. It sounds as though what we have is a consent agreement that was developed in good faith that isn't meeting that goal. And so my question is, do we have flexibility? How do we look at, are there ways to make changes to the consent agreement so that we can continue to, I still support the goal we had, but maybe this tool isn't working the way that we thought it would? And is there a way, we're into the land of legal documents, and I don't know what we have, for opportunities to approach this and say, we had a goal, this isn't working, what are the options that we have in order to adjust that? So if that's something where our attorney with some head, some lead time can, can address and talk with the Maine Organics folks about what we can do, I still support the goal that we had. I think we have a diverse economy. I want all the businesses to thrive, I want people to be happy that they live here. This tool seems to not be working, and I'd be interested in, number one, is that true? And then otherwise, what are options for adjusting, amending, reopening the consent agreement?
So our city attorney is here. Did you want to speak on any of this, John?
No.
Having not given him much of a, any heads up.
So this consent agreement that you signed is an administrative consent agreement, so this did not go to court. This was something that the council came up with as a contractual matter to try to resolve the situation before it went to court. So that being the case, it's in the nature of a contract, and there is certainly the opportunity to revisit that by having discussions with Maine Organics. So I think there's always the possibility of working collaboratively with them to try to resolve some of these issues. If you wanted to unilaterally change it, then I'd have to take a look at the contract more specifically to see if they have any kind of vested rights in that. But definitely, you can go forward, and you can have those discussions with Maine Organics and try to rework the provisions that aren't working. Ultimately, there's the ordinance that you have, and you can always enforce the ordinance regardless of a consent decree to remedy past violations.
Thank you. Excuse me, thank you.
You're welcome.
Steve, one, I want to apologize for how I reacted to your visual olfactory display. I just found, you know, I was hopeful that we had, you know, this council developed a relationship where we can talk to each other before we need to take somewhat extraordinary steps. I grew up in Maine on the coast, and I, my father was a lobsterman for a while, and Maine doesn't always smell great. There's bait and gas and paper mills and, and Ellsworth is part of that tradition. That's why I think this council is trying to find a way to balance, you know, businesses that aren't always the most, you know, friendly to the nose or the eye, and the people that live around it. And I get that. I mean, I truly sympathize with the people that live near it. I have smelt this, this summer, it just doesn't smell good, and I understand that. So my hope is that the council, I think it's, seems it's not working, let's find a way to make it work. I don't want to put any businesses out of business. I want to have luxury treehouses and compost businesses in Ellsworth, because I think that's what Ellsworth is. And I think we should hopefully find a way to make that work.
Councillor O'Halloran?
To respond a little bit, Patrick, I've lived here 60 years. I've sat here for three years and, and got nowhere with this offensive odor to other businesses. And sometimes visual aids are the best option when you're getting nowhere. And that's why I brought the visual aid. I find them powerful. And again, that was the finished product. That isn't what the residents are going through. And to clarify, you know, all of this problem seems to be put on us. This isn't our problem. This is Maine Organics' problem, to keep their odor on their own property. How they do it doesn't matter to me. If they build a building, if they find tools to work with, whatever. And I don't care if you can't breathe on their property. It's their property. And I don't care if you can't breathe on their property. It's their property. I'm talking about others' properties. I think if Maine Organics wants to wear Gasmax every day and do their job, that's great. I'm thankful that they're composting. I think it's great. But I don't think it's Ellsworth's problem when they're pushing that odor over the lines and we already have an ordinance. I think that this problem seems to be put on us. And it really should be put on Maine Organics to comply with not pushing their odor over their boundary lines. That's my view.
Counselor Anderson?
Every time that we talk about this, I do, I actually have not gone back and listened to that planning board meeting, although I have been curious about it, about whether the business has lived up to whatever it told the planning board originally. I'm not, I never have felt like I've totally got the answer to that question. But if we go back and decide that what they told the planning board is what they are doing and that they are where they are supposed to be, then I agree with Nancy that I do actually think we have made progress in the last couple of years and I would hope that... But I also agree, it seems that it's not working adequately for the neighbors. So I would also favor some way of continuing to put pressure on the business in order to create an atmosphere that actually is tolerable for the neighbors and tolerable for the other businesses. If possible.
I'm sorry. I just wanna, I think another point that's important to me, that gentleman from the, I cannot remember the name of the business. Can, am I allowed to ask?
It's Harbor Camp.
Pardon?
Harbor Camp.
Harbor Camp, thank you. The impact, I remember when he came and spoke earlier with all of the due diligence. They are not neighbors. They are, I think, at least a mile away. And so I feel like they did their part to ensure that there wasn't an issue. So it's, this is a big deal because it's not confined to just the neighborhood, that it really is broader than that. But beyond that, I'm looking for the collective wisdom of the council on how we can, I think, continue to allow different kinds of businesses to thrive here in Ellsworth.
I think it is our problem and our responsibility. The way I see the council is stepping in occasionally as compromisers when things are not clear, when things are messy. Because I don't think it's really a matter of, let's let everybody break the rules a little bit because, you know, the rules are one way and the way that businesses operate and the way that life works is a different way. And so it's not easy to determine numerically what the smell level is. Someone's gotta go and sniff it. And that was part of the reason, last year, we determined, it's not really gonna be easy. You know, Mr. Stone said, "This is an almost unenforceable consent agreement." It's not easily enforceable, you're right. But the previous version, which was just us trying to figure out what the ordinance meant and how we could find them and could we actually do anything with their license since they were licensed through the DEP? It was difficult and it was messy, so we saw this as a way to start working on this and at least start from a place and see if that agreement worked. And I think I recommended, when we talked about this consent agreement, that we revisited it in six months when it started getting hotter and things were changing. And I think it's possible. I think Maine Organics has a record of working with us and trying to do the right thing. I think if they're amenable to it, we sit back down with them. We talk about what could change. We made a first draft of this. It worked somewhat in some ways. We have a good baseline now. I think we could sit back down with them, think through it a little bit and figure out what could be tweaked in that agreement and hopefully go forward from there. So we don't have that many other options, as far as I know, if they're licensing the way that it is.
From day one, when I brought this, before this, well, a different council, I was very soft with the contractor. I don't wanna harm the contractor. I said that. The contractor was here. Contractor being Maine Organics. I want everyone to survive and thrive. But I think we're letting this seven-year process hurt others. And I think it's taking too long and making too many people suffer by not addressing the odor going over the line. And I'm not after fining anybody. I'm after solutions. And certainly, they're trying to do it. They're trying to do better and they are doing better. But it's still not fair to allow this to happen. And, you know, you've got, don't forget, most of those businesses existed in that business park that was sold by the city of Ellsworth to those businesses when they developed those lots. And then Maine Organics comes in. And to speak to Casey's point, I've gone back and watched the video. And there was a big concern through the planning board about that. And the contractor stood up and said, "If it's done right, it won't smell." Well, it hasn't been done right, if that's a true statement. I think it's been better and I think they're working hard at it. I would like to see some unity. But enough is enough. If these neighbors can't rely on the city to enforce this, then I would encourage the people that are affected to apply for a tax abatement. Because the value of your property is plummeting by allowing this.
Can I just, I just would like to take, I'm sorry. So, I guess I'm embarrassed to say that I have not listened to that planning board meeting. And I think I would like to, is there some way that we can have that sent to all of the counselors?
Sure.
So that we know exactly what was said and what was promised?
I think it's July of 17, but I might have that off.
Yep, I can look at that and get it to you.
Or even the written minutes. I don't know, I think we have verbatims somewhere. Counselor Williams?
Yeah, no, I think now we're having a good conversation. I guess for Steve, I mean, your sign seems to indicate you believe the business should be shut down.
That's not true. Do not put words in my mouth.
Oh, no, I'm not trying to. I'm just trying, so what would you propose that we do?
That sign says, "Stop and think. Contain the stink." That sign means put the stink on their own property. I don't care what their property smells like.
Sure. I mean, again, and I'm not trying to be adversarial here. I'm asking the question, do you have a proposal?
I do. I think the city needs to enforce its own ordinance. I think we should not have tolerated this for seven years.
So bring an enforcement action in court and...
Whatever it takes. What we're doing doesn't work. If you have suggestions as a lawyer, let's hear it. But what we're doing doesn't work.
Let me review the minutes. I also wanna review, you know, the consent agreement. In some ways, the consent agreement was a response to the minutes and to these other pieces. This was the initial solution, to your point, John. The sort of, this is a consent agreement. Let's see how it's going. I think, Steve, you've mentioned on a few occasions that the Maine Organics has been very amenable to processes and procedures change, that it has gotten better.
Absolutely.
So it's an important business. They also don't just own that facility. They own the demolition, construction, transfer station next door. You know, there's, next to that is our own transfer station. I also have to consider, like, what's the outcome? If this facility, where would this, you know, fairly large amount of Jackson Labs, you know, byproduct go? A lot of the Seaford byproduct go? It could go into landfill, it could go into other areas, which also may create these issues. So I wanna kinda plan out what additional action items are. And also what the intent of the council is. If the intent, kinda to your point, Patrick, if the intent is, you know, no border crossing, no time, no time of day, there may not be, there may be, but there may not be a cost, you know, or non-cost prohibitive solution that accomplishes that goal. And also, but thinking back to the legal consequences, it's approved in 2017. We'll get the minutes. We'll look at those. There's also a consent agreement that they're not in violation of. And so, you know, if the direction is, you know, we need to create a consent agreement that establishes this goal, that would require this, what would the consequences be so that you all have some action options to pursue here? I understand, it seems like all counselors would like this, you know, and how do we, you know, abide by previous planning boards and consent agreements that have been passed to this business in good faith, but also the new businesses that are coming in here and that we wanna, you know, I think this is, in some ways, this is indicative of Ellsworth and legacy businesses and new businesses and, you know, and this is kind of the role of the councils, to figure out some solutions here. I think myself and Robert probably have some even more planning to do. We've already spent a fair amount of time on this. We did not find violations in the consent agreement as written, but with a more broader lens on if we want to contain the stink, as you say, Steve.
That's my only request.
You know, and I know that is the intent. Are there options that I'm not considering now or that we haven't considered that could be non-cost prohibitive? Or is this, you know, is this a balance we have to make between, you know, this great new investment in town, but that's also, you know, suffering via a previous investment? And how do we have some options to consider and pursue here? So I will, unless there seems to be a vote now, I think I'll try and do a little more research with the minutes, getting a little more background on that with legal, on any legal options to changes in the consent agreement that could be under consideration. I'll talk again to the business owner about, maybe I'll talk to the other business owners too to get, I know that, there's the actual policy that, as you've mentioned, is difficult in the enforcement side of things to get that violation, as you said. But, you know, that doesn't mean that I can't come over there too at some time. You know, I know Robert has, it's very, I don't wanna interfere with his piece of it at all. He's supposed to abide by the consent agreement and that's his marching orders. But I also can, on a more outside-the-box category, I can maybe come visit your facility, see the challenges, talk to your employees, talk to other business owners. I know you and I see him talking about that in the area and trying to get some additional action items through the council to consider. And just a little more data, a little more options, and we'll think about next steps. Does that work?
This is the discussion. Sorry, did you raise your hand?
Yes. I like the direction we're going in. One loose end, I guess two points. One is, one loose end, I'm not sure that we have addressed completely, is how people contact the code enforcement officer for violations outside of office hours or during office hours. I know that you've made yourself available, but in your notes, you said you didn't get an email till Monday. And then let me, the second point is, I hope that we can work on this between council meetings so that we are up to speed and ready to go with new information.
Yeah, I think that's what...
Before the August meeting, not at the August meeting. That would be my goal, to keep this moving.
Yeah, I can get you a progress report at the August meeting. I can't, you know, especially with the nature of this type of...
No, what I'm looking for is like, what you can, you know, if the goal is that within the next two weeks, or three, you're able to find the background information I'm looking for, do some research so that we have time to process it all, rather than receiving new information at a council meeting and then it's gotta wait one more month. So anything we can do to keep this moving forward and not on hold for the next month.
Would you like to answer the question about how people connect with you?
Yeah. The easiest way would be to email, my city email, rgrant@ellsworthmaine.gov. I get those 24 hours a day. If I'm asleep, I can't do much about it, I guess, but...
It's understandable.
We did get one that I saw about 1:30 in the morning. I happened to wake up and saw it, but it was already too late at that point. And then you can also call my office during business hours, 667-4910. And I should any day now have a city cellphone and I will make, be happy to make that number available if anyone wants to call. I currently live right down the road, actually. So my response time can be pretty fast when I'm technically off the clock. So I'm willing, and on the 28th of June, I was there four or five hours off the clock that day to deal with those complaints. So I'm more than willing, if we get complaints, to go, even if it's not normal business hours.
And I know that you are working hard on making this happen. I just wanna make sure that people either here or watching, or watching and recording later, know that this isn't just a nine-to-five and then you're, you know, you're out of luck if that's when the complaints are, that you are monitoring. So email is generally as good as the phone number.
Email, I get on my phone, so when it pops up, I can see it as soon as I, you know, happen to look at my phone.
Right.
And as soon as they get the city cellphone, I'll be more than happy to supply that number. However we wanna do it, if we wanna put it on the website, however, wherever we wanna do that, it's fine with me. So, you know, that would be an easy way to get.
Yep.
They could leave a voicemail if they don't pick it up and/or they could even technically text that, I guess. So leave me a text message if that was, that would be their preferred method.
And are you exploring the purchasing of a piece of equipment?
Yes.
That was supposed to be the smellometer?
I have contacted the DEP several times. I finally got a response back last month. It's taken that long.
Yeah.
They said that, they gave me the name of a third-party company, which I emailed the week of July 4th and still haven't heard back from. So I'll email again, but I've been busy with other matters too. That was on my agenda, things to do today, actually, and didn't get there.
I understand.
So, that's also partially why we're in the process of trying to hire a third person for my office.
Understood. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. So the council order was discussion and possible action against Maine Organics for violations and we have been told that they haven't made any violations per the consent agreement. So is there any further discussion? Item number 12, update discussion with potential action on Juniper Cemetery, sponsored by Counselor Smith.
Yep, I can do a brief introduction. You will recall, on my shiny first meeting as a city councilor in November of last year, the Juniper Cemetery came to the council and I offered to take the lead in what's next. A lot of work has gone into this in determining the best path forward to ensure the care of the cemetery and respect for those who are buried there. I am pleased with the plan that Charlie has come up with after lots of discussions back and forth. I believe it's a strong strategy. And with that, I'll pass it on to Charlie to outline what we're thinking for next steps for Juniper Cemetery.
Thank you. Your backup material was, it was emailed to us earlier. Everyone has it?
Yep.
And I can go over it briefly. It'll be posted for the website for those that are interested as well. You know, this is very shiny. I was also, that was the first council meeting when I was applied for this position and came in for the interview. This is actually the first council meeting I watched. So I've been listening to this issue for a while. I know this, the city's sort of been in a sort of limbo right now, I think, as it waits to potentially do a new nonprofit or an association piece. But it seems like enough time has passed so we really need to formalize the city's holding of it for the next, at least the next year and to ensure our policies and procedures are adequately meeting the needs of this very important site. So the city is going to, is proposing a, you know, we'll come back for a future vote, but is proposing to really outline exactly what the city's responsibilities will be to ensure that the site is adequately maintained. It will be for financial administration. You know, the Juniper Cemetery currently holds a TD Bank checking and savings account, which our clerk, Sue McLean, is going to be authorized as a signer for the cemetery-related transactions. We're also going to be outlining, you know, detailed public financial reporting structures and auditing procedures for if and when that money is used for maintenance of the grounds as well as how much money we take in for burials. We've already done one burial there in recent months and, you know, we wanna just make sure that all of our i's are dotted and t's are crossed. On that bylaws and governance side of things, Rudman and Winchell is gonna be revising the cemetery's bylaws to reflect the city's ongoing control of the property, specific policies and procedures for the city to maintain compliance and high serions of care, a new governance structure, which could include the formation of a new city committee to oversee the cemeteries. The old burial ground, now that's not an active burial piece, is currently under the Historic Preservation Commission, but there are other cities and towns that have committees relative to this type of activity. So we just wanna make sure we're using best practices in the state as we hold this piece for another year. The sexton role, where Jen Sala has been kindly assisting us with the previous burial as enacting sexton. We may look to formalize her role as the juniper sexton at a future meeting, but also... additionally having Jen train additional sextons as we outline policies and procedures as deputies, so we have backup in that category as well. You know, you never, you always want to have backup in case somebody's not here and something comes up. And then also just all the records, maps for Juniper Cemetery are currently stored with the city clerk. They have been for some time now, but making sure we have policies and procedures relative to that. And the, also the lawn maintenance, I think we kind of missed the mark in some ways. This is what really spurred the, let's formalize these, these activities, let's make sure that, you know, while we're in this, this stage of holding it, that we're very clear on roles and responsibilities with the city. We, sort of an informal agreement with the previous maintenance person to continue that. They're, they're, you know, we're going to formalize that role, potentially put it out to bid for, per the city's contracting ordinances to, to, to maintain those, those grounds during the times when the grass is growing and to make sure that it's in tip-top shape. So we're also in some internal policies and procedures, making sure that, you know, we're, our great highway department, who is Adam, you know, something falls at the end and it doesn't seem to have some responsibility. I think it often goes to our clerk's team, Sue, and, and to our, our highway department. And they're, as always, really stepped up to the plate here. They're, they're driving by quite often to make sure the maintenance is happening as, as it should be. And, you know, for future plans upon completion of the revised bylaws, we'll present these documents for an appropriate council meeting for potential approval. And, and then we'll, at the year mark, you know, we'll be reevaluating how well this is going with the city holding it and potential nonprofits we obviously consider, continue to consider for taking over ownership of the grounds, as long as they're operating in good faith. And, you know, obviously this, if we do take it over, there'll be increased reporting to this council and budgeting to make sure that it's adequately accounted for and, and audited properly. So that's kind of where we're at with Juniper and open up some questions.
Do you have any questions for city manager?
Just, I think when, if I recall correctly, when we had this discussion at the November meeting, which also was my first, that, that the clear understanding was the city would take this on, help a transition, and then find new folks to, not, not the city to operate it. And, you know, and I understand circumstances change and we have to find what works best, but I think, I don't know, I don't, can't speak for the rest of the council, but I don't know if the, you know, I think, hopefully the goal is to find an organization that can run the, the cemetery. But if that's not feasible, then of course I think, you know, the city needs to do what's necessary to respect these, you know, cemeteries and burial grounds. But I guess I'm just saying, I would encourage us to see if we can't pursue the former path of, you know, nonprofit organization running this. And if that's not feasible, then, you know, whatever options are left, we'll, we'll pursue those.
Absolutely, definitely under consideration. We're going to, knowing kind of where we're at now, we really want to tighten up the policies and procedures so that, that we can be operating in good faith and then potentially looking out absolutely to additional nonprofits for operation as well.
And, and I would agree with that too. That was our intent, to not keep an open cemetery. That, and I do know that there is a board that has been put together that is interested in running that cemetery. So I do encourage us to get our ducks in a row, but to, to work towards passing that along, as was the intent of the council last November. Any other questions, discussion? Thank you. Council appointments, discussion and action to appoint Nathaniel Moore as finance director, Suzanne McLean as city clerk, Katina Van Adistine as director of social services, Michael Harris as public works director.
Yeah, this is, gosh, I'm just so honored to work here with such great leaders across this organization. So I'm really, really happy to nominate, first I'll start with Tina Van Dastine. I probably messed up the pronunciation. Some say I say Tyne.
Did I say it right?
You did.
Thank you.
Could you say it for all of us?
Van Adistine.
Thank you. Well, I am pleased to announce the promotion of Tina Van Adistine to social services director. Tina, hopefully upon approval, take a larger leadership role in the organization in managing all social, social services and overseeing election processes for the city. Tina is a Hancock County Leadership graduate with 20 years of experience with the city, 27 years as a certified city clerk, history of excellence as a certified Maine welfare director, and recognition as the welfare director of the year in 2021. In addition to her expanding role with social services and elections, Tina will also be partnering with Sue McLean on ensuring the highest levels of customer service and her front office operations at city hall. One of the things that most impress me about Tina is her ability to mix compassion for our citizens with an incredible knowledge of government procedures and policies to get people the help they need quickly. Tina's expertise and leadership will continue to be invaluable to our team. Next up on my promotion list is Sue McLean, who I'm nominating to go from interim city clerk to full-time city clerk. And I'd like to say congratulations to Sue. I think she has been doing an excellent job. She joined city hall as tax clerk in September of 2020 and has made significant contributions to this team, including restructuring the tax liens and foreclosure processes. Her background includes roles as deputy clerk, deputy, as deputy treasurer at the Gouldsboro Town Office, and extensive experience in insurance. She's also a graduate of the Hancock County Leadership Program, which has done some excellent work for the city. I know we've had many, many members of our team in that program. And she's incredibly forward-thinking ideas on how to optimize our business and customer service interactions, provide best-in-class operations for the front office teams. Sue's strong work ethic is coupled with the ability to offer myself and other members of our team advice in just about every, every topic. She's sort of the city therapist, as you might say. And she's always the first to offer help when a new issue comes across our radar. Sue's commitment to the city and her innovative approach will be key assets in her new role. And lastly, my nomination for Mike Works, Mike, Mike Works, Mike Harris. He does work. Interrupted meeting today, so he could help out on an issue, as our public works director. Mike has been, is being nominated for promotion to public works director. He's a dedicated professional with a rich history in wastewater management and environmental services. His career began at the Hampton Road Sanitary District in 1989, and he has been the wastewater superintendent at the Ellsworth Water Department since 2005. I believe Michelle might have even been involved in his initial.
I hired him.
He's a graduate of Mount Arat High School in Topsham, Maine. There was a rumor that he was from Philadelphia, which I want to squash immediately. He's a Vayner. And he's also a graduate of the Norfolk Vocational Technical Institute apprenticeship Program. He's a critical leader during the expedited city budgeting process this year, helping to consolidate an incredible amount of departmental line items into first Excel workbooks and then a new budgeting software, which was an extraordinarily difficult learning curve, and I was really, really impressed with the work he did there. He has a foundational understanding of how our city infrastructure operates, but also passion and vision for reimagining that infrastructure to meet the growing demands of this growing city. His attention to detail and hyper-focus on getting quantifiable results for the city are going to be invaluable skills as our team looks to reestablish and prioritize a comprehensive short and long-term infrastructure plan for Ellsworth. And his extensive passion and experience in the field is going to really benefit our public works department. So thank you to Mike, Sue, and Tina. Really looking forward to working with you all further on leadership of this great city, pending council approval, of course. So happy to take any questions about the roles.
And we're also approving.
Nathan Moore.
We're waiting for nice things.
That guy.
And then there's Nate. And Nate was announced earlier, there was a nice article in the Ellsworth American detailing his background and restructuring of the finance department, all the great goals they're, they're doing. I think you all, he needs no introduction, all the work he did on that process and our meetings and the, handling the transition. You know, as I think I, I mentioned before, maybe it was a budgeting meeting or maybe it was the finance committee meeting, it was, we went from meeting every single day, twice a day with myself, Nate and the team, you know, to once a day, to once a week. And then last week, you know, just everything's happening without even asking for it. I was like, we can cancel this meeting. Like you, you guys have this. They're, they're doing an incredible job over there and really excited about the work they're going to be doing for the years ahead, so.
Thank you.
Sure.
What is the will of the council?
I would make an enthusiastic motion to approve all four.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? unanimous. Congratulations. And Nate likes cream, uh, cream cheese, cheesecake. Saw him at Momo's with his family.
I was going to say, if only there was someplace in, in Ellsworth where he could get something 25/7.
That's where I saw him. He brought his whole family to Momo's.
I like cheesecake too.
Noted.
Item 14, council order 072401, determination of whether the residential building located at 7 Fairgrounds Road on land owned by Sandra L. Caslaskis, map 137 lot 113 of the current tax maps of Ellsworth, Maine, described in book 2901, page 308 at the Hancock County Registry of Deeds, is a nuisance or dangerous within the meaning of 17 MRS subsection 2851. And Mr. Grant.
Hello again, Robert Grant, code enforcement. So this is one of the few things left over from, from having Lori here. In February of 2023, the Caslaskis' home at 7 Fairground Road caught fire in the upstairs and was partially burned and has been uninhabitable since. And there's been, we, we received numerous complaints from the neighborhood of rodent infestations coming from this property. And we have just not seen any sign from, from the owners of any progress being made on, on rectifying the, the damage onto the structure or cleaning up any of the debris that are surrounding it. So that's why we made the determination that we would like to have this hearing to deem it a dangerous building, unsafe structure, and ask the city to demolish it so that we don't have any, you know, kids going in and getting, getting hurt or any more rodents or any other things like that pestering the neighborhood. I can say that, you know, 18 months or so of, of the, the, the weather giving, being allowed inside that building probably hasn't had, done it any favors. I haven't personally been inside, and I hope you all forgive me for that, but I didn't want to go in after all that time. So I did provide you in the packet with a few photos that were taken last week to show you the current or as close to current state of the property as I could when the packet was due, so. If anybody has any questions.
Any questions?
Um, yes. Just can you refresh my memory? We had a very thorough conversation about this, it feels like several months ago.
It was a few months ago, yeah.
What happens after the buildings are demolished? Who owns the property? What happens going forward?
The Caslaskis family owns the property.
Okay.
What, what would happen, basically, unless legal counsel would like to counter, you know, you know, countermand what I'm saying? Basically, we would take the responsibility of demolishing the building. We would probably put it out to bid. And then we would assess the costs on the property, owners probably in the form of a lien. That would be up to Sue, probably not me. That would we do that. Yeah, you're welcome.
Can I just ask our attorneys how that would happen? I'm sorry.
Good evening. So typically what happens in, in a dangerous building condemnation is that this group would issue an order. The order would specify what happens next. Quite often, the order goes to the landowner saying, you've got 30 days to rehabilitate it, make the property safe again. And if you don't, then you'll going to be required to demolish the building within 30 days. And if you don't, then the city can go in and demolish it for you and charge you for the cost, which would be basically put on the property owner through a special assessment. So it would be added to their tax bill. And depending upon the, the nature of the problem and the severity, the timelines are up to you. This is a property that's been around for a very long period of time, so I presume that a shorter time period would be more appropriate because it has sat vacant for so long. But it's your order and you have the authority to make, once you make the finding that the structure is structurally unsafe, unsanitary, constitutes a fire hazard, or is unsuitable for the proper use of occupancy where it's put, once you make those findings that you, that the building is no longer a safe building, you have pretty broad discretion about deciding what happens to it afterwards. But the property underlying does remain the property of, of the property owner, subject to your, your, to your lien for the costs. Doesn't mean the city can't enter negotiations to, to take over the property if, if there's any interest in doing that. We can always have those discussions as well.
Is, as part of the demolition, is it, or can we make it that the requirement is, I don't know what it looks like generally after a building is demolished, but make it so that it is ready for reuse, rehabilitation, resale, that it's that completely cleaned up?
The, the, the point of the order is to eradicate the dangerous nature of the property. So usually that means bulldozing the, the building into a hole and smoothing it out or something like that, or, or remedying what you need to remediate. So it mean, you're not going to clear it for development necessarily, but it should be cleared to a point where it's relatively safe property.
I just, I'm, so I guess a question to you, there will be time for a public comment if people are here who want to comment on this.
Yes.
I, I can see a downward spiral where the demolition needs to happen, but then we, there's a property that has, has liens against it, but nobody can use, and there's a spiral where, where the owners lose the land as well because of the liens that come and, and the inability to be able to either build something or sell it. And so my concern is just when we do put out an RFP, what, that, that's a consideration about how much, I understand not making it pristine, but to make it to the point where it's cleaned up there and where it's usable again for the current property owner or a future property owner.
You, you have a fair amount of discretion in ordering how it's cleaned up. Like I said, it, it will be made safe, but I am not familiar with the property enough to know exactly what further steps you might want taken.
So if we do make it pristine more than just safe, can that extra cost be also assessed or does the city pay for that proportion? Is there a limit to how much we can do if putting it on their taxes?
There's no particular limit, but it has to be relatively related to the remediation of the property. So once the dangerous building has been demolished, you know, if you decide you want to clear the land and cut down a bunch of trees, that's not related, then I would say you probably can't assert, assess that to the property owner. But certainly anything that's necessary to make the property safe would be fair, including legal fees and, and demolition fees and all those components that go into it.
And those are assessed on next year's taxes?
It could be a special assessment, but it, it's based on when the costs are, are incurred.
Okay, so the lien, I'm sorry, so it would have a separate lien process?
It could be a special assessment.
Okay, thank you.
And what I think, what I heard, what I want to think I just heard was it's not just making the building that burned safe, but the property safe. Looking at the photo, there are outbuildings that look to be unsafe. And, and I guess it's a consideration as we move forward, that getting halfway there isn't going to be helpful to the property owner or the city in getting this land back into productive use. So that is a consideration as we put out the RFP, I think would be productive for everybody.
I would suggest getting some additional testimony from the code enforcement officer regarding the, the nature of outbuildings that might be there and the shape that those outbuildings are in, and perhaps a bit more of a, of a description of what the problem is with the primary building, just so we can build up the record to show what the problems are and what needs to be addressed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are we going to have a, so shouldn't this be a public hearing?
Did this need, it's not a public hearing.
It's not.
I thought that the reason it was, because we already actually had had this conversation. I thought the whole reason it was back on today was because it needed to be. I thought the whole reason it was back on today was because it needed to be a public hearing. I mean, I may not be remembering right, but that's how I remember it.
If that's the case, then we need to stop and do this next month. Because it, it, it isn't a public hearing. It hasn't been advertised as such.
Yeah, it needs to be.
It does need to be.
I believe so. And I also, yeah, and then the fact that the code enforcement officer hasn't physically been in the building to assess it, I have concerns.
On the pictures, I don't think he needs to.
Well, at least get up.
I didn't think it would be safe to go in.
Well, as close, how close have you gotten to it?
I've, I've stood on the property and looked at it.
Okay.
I mean, I took the photos myself, so.
Yeah, have you been able to look in in any way to see what's in there?
Yeah, it's.
Yeah, I, I, I think we need to notice it for a public hearing and then as much as, and you didn't take these pictures?
I did.
You did take these pictures?
I took these pictures, yeah.
Okay, so you can explain to us what we're seeing, what day it was taken. I'm sorry, my lawyer brain is popping on here, but I think we need to, if we do proceed down this path and we find a hearing, have a finding of dangerous building, the, they have a right to appeal, and if this went to a court, they, we would have, you know, be a matter of evidentiary support.
But Lori did all of that, right? When we talked about this last?
The last one.
Just going through the, the statute, I don't believe that a public hearing is necessarily required. The property owners and anyone with an interest in the property had to be noticed, and they were.
Okay.
So I, I believe that procedurally, you're, you're okay to proceed tonight.
Okay, well then, if we're procedurally okay to proceed, and Robert has gotten close enough that he feels confident he described to us the state of the building and how it, you know, as you apply the statute to it. I mean, I think we just need to make sure we have a record that makes it clear if we are gonna find it. Because they do have a right to appeal.
Sure, absolutely.
So if this goes to a judge, we want to make sure we've got a, a record that supports the findings.
Do we have anyone here tonight to speak on this?
Yeah.
Okay, would you like to speak? I'm sorry.
I would, I'd love it.
Oh.
Maybe we can give her a mic.
I'm gonna get you a microphone, I'm sorry. Hold on just a second. Not to make you go all the way up there.
Girls, we got a podium here. You know, due to health issues and stuff, even just before the, less than a week before the fire, we just got our, my husband was just released from the hospital after a double lower amput- lower limb amputation. So he's still not on his feet. See me, I too have got multiple health issues. He's been helping us tremendously, my son, on getting stuff done. Hillary Fernal with the legal, legal aide for the elderly has been working with us, and she and Lori has actually had some heated conversations. And I know, we're not sure what you're, you're referring to about some of the notifications because we don't have much of that. Most of it was done directly through Lori and the lawyer. So, but we are in the process right now of trying to get, of having some people come in and start working on the house because it is not structurally unsound. And Sean can talk more about that because she's been doing a lot of research into it for me.
No, I, I first off, like, apologize on the time that it got to this point of, like, it's addressing you and the, but it's a unfortunate timing, like now, because everything's like kind of coming together, like, okay, so, I got Bill Crawford Jr. coming down to seal off the building from elements and critters and such. We got a contract coordinator trying to, like, lining up, like, electricians, plumbers, roofers. Like, we intend to put this together, like, is, there's been unfortunate delays with the insurance where it just keeps passing back and there's no. But right now, it's, it's in the point where things, things are starting to move, and fortunately, it's got to the point that you have, you have concerns, I just, I wish to address that. It's just about to get, like, sealed up. It's gonna, it's, we have people willing to work on it. I, I don't know that it has to go through the effort of you tearing it down to, and figuring out the strategy of that and all the headache of that when you cannot, and it, it, it's going to come together. Like, I, I don't, I don't want to wish to burn you anymore, like, on this, but it, we have every intention to have the house together. It has been unfortunate that it has taken this long, and there's, but we have willing, able help. I, I just want that in consideration that, like, I know, like, it's a lot of headache for you to go through, like, what's the legal way of doing all this, but like, oddly enough, if you just wait, it's, it's going to come together.
Could I, could I clarify, ma'am, you're the owner of the property?
Yes.
And you are?
Personal.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Okay. Sorry. All right, we're just trying to.
I just ran a number.
So to question, if, if I may ask a, a few questions, so, it's your intent to make this a better property than it is today?
Absolutely.
And to make some sort of livable home there? Or sell the property or, or do clean it up, or what is the?
To live there. We have a remedial company coming in to, it's supposed to go ahead and clean everything out, take the stuff out that's not salvable, and then clean up the stuff that we can go ahead and reuse. They're planning on doing everything, you know, to, to make it more habitable. And our biggest problem has been trying to work with the mortgage holder, who is in St. Louis, believe it or not. And every time we send a big check down to them, they lose it. And this last time, we've talked with the insurance agent, and he, they're going to be sending, they're gonna be talking directly with them and finding out how much to send them, and then the rest will be going into the renovation of the building. So.
Can I ask one more question about that? Could you tell me the date of this fire?
February 20th of 2023.
Of 2023, okay. So if, my question is this, and I can't speak for the council, it's just a, a question of, of interest to me. What timeframe do you as an owner need to rectify this problem?
I would say less than six months.
But within 12?
Oh, yes, definitely.
So next year at this time?
Well, she said, she said less than six months.
Right, I'm just trying to look at the worst-case scenario, you've had delays.
And I appreciate that. I really appreciate that.
So I'm asking, if you say six months and, and you think within six months.
The only thing that would hold it up is the contracting, and you, you guys have all been aware of how contracting is, contractors have been in great demand for this, for the area. And that's one of the things that's been held in this up also, is the fact that without having the time for a contractor that would meet the criteria, we don't want to get some fly-by-night person in. We want to get someone that is, actually, the city would be happy with too. You know, that it's not, it's not something that we're just trying to go ahead and patch, patch it together. We, we want to be able to get back and live in our house. We wouldn't even be here if it hadn't been for a cat that woke us up, and then he got us out. So he actually ended up in the hospital himself from smoke inhalation in that morning. And it, it, it's been quite a health issue for all of us, but we loved our home, and it's a, it's a great place to be. I mean, I live in, I'm not, I'm not directly from Maine, but I've came here almost 50 years ago. And we ended up down here in this area in Ellsworth, maybe, was it, almost 30 years ago? So it's something, it's someplace we want to stay.
Thank you for coming in and sharing some of your story. Have either of you been in touch with the city code office over the last year or so?
Only with Lori, and she wasn't, it was, it was a weird relationship.
You said through the lawyer?
No, Lori, yeah.
But Lori, Lori had contacted her attorney or something?
The last, the last code enforcement, which she even admitted she's never been in the house. And she just, the day that, we had the fire, she posted it as an unsafe building.
Move in 24 hours.
It wasn't even the same day. It was within 12 hours. She had, she classified it as unsafe. And she told us within just a couple of weeks, she'd like to have it torn down. And even though it's mostly the upstairs that was hands-on damaged, the fire was mostly contained at the upstairs. Most of the stuff downstairs was water and, water and smoke damage. Is there anything else I can help you with?
A few questions. So would you say, but right now, do you agree that you, that the building is not fit for habitation?
I, yeah, until we get, well, it's, right now, we've had the water turned off since the day of the fire. No electricity, so yeah, we, we wouldn't stay there until that was rectified, which means that we want to make sure that all the electric and stuff was done. I've actually paid already for the, what is it called? The permit to go ahead and fix it? But I, we were told by Lori also that we can't go forth until she was the one that sent us the, the little card that we have to post on the outside, and we've never received anything.
Okay, and so you haven't lived in it since the fire?
Motels.
Yeah, no, I'm so sorry for, it's happened to you, really awful.
You can get, you can get two motel rooms in this, this room here real easy, and we had three people living in it, three adult people living in it. And that included the bathroom.
No, no, I, no, I'm so sorry that that's, this has happened to you. You know, along the lines of Steve's questions, I think, you know, as far as, and I guess it also applies to the code enforcement officer, but if the building's not safe to live in and it's causing.
Not until the upstairs is fixed.
Not, yeah, so, you know, one path here is the city can still find it to be a dangerous building, and my, and I'd like to hear Attorney Hamer's thoughts is, you could find it to be a dangerous building that we could, but we could provide a period of time to let them try to fix it. But I think in the immediate term, we need to have an immediate securing of the building if the concern is children or people wandering into an unsafe building. If we were to pursue, you know, we've, we've heard from them tonight that they admit it's an unsafe building, so I don't, and the pictures, you know.
Then how would someone come in to go ahead, a contractor come in to work on it?
Well, so, so I'm, I'm thinking out loud a little bit here, but I think I'm just, if there's a possibility to potentially have it secured in the short term and then to provide a period of, a reasonable period of time to have the building brought, made safe, that could be a path for the council. But, you know, I think from the pictures and your own admission here, it's a dangerous building, so the city has to balance, you know, trying to keep it for you, but at the same time, keeping people safe.
Well, a lot of the reasons why, even, even when we got the electricity and the water back on, we would have to go ahead, it has to do with the fact that we, two people in wheelchairs, and it makes it really hard to do.
Yeah, so, yeah, so it needs a lot of work, and we get that, so I'm just trying to find a. Yeah. Now, clearly, a very dutiful son. But, you know, I think we're trying to find a way to make that, if we can find a way to make that work, I think everyone, I can't speak for the council, as I've liked to say a lot tonight, but, you know, I don't think, no one up here wants to take your home away from you, but we do have to balance the safety of the public. So those are just my thoughts. If there's a way to secure the building safely in the short term.
So you're, you're okay with maybe padlocks on the outside?
So I would leave that up to a professional that would be able to tell me what is necess, if it's possible, and I'd like to hear from the code enforcement officer, in your opinion, is it possible to secure this building in the short term to keep it, people safe? And I also understand this vermin issue, so, you know, do we need to get an exterminator in there and then secure the building? Is that possible, in your opinion?
Uh, it would, it's not just the, the home, it's also the garage in, in the photo. So it wouldn't be easy to do the garage especially, you'd need, like, large, like, plywood, panels of plywood to cover those, those garage doors. I mean, we, we could probably secure the, the doors of the house somehow. I'm not sure, I can't remember, is it, is it a bulkhead door? Is there, is there a bulkhead door for a basement? No? Okay. I can't, I couldn't remember off the top of my head. Okay. I mean, yes, it would be, it would be possible. I mean, how easy, I mean, it depends on your, your opinion of easy. I need, I need to have some help with that, and I couldn't, probably couldn't do it myself, so.
We have someone coming in to secure the building.
Okay. That would, that would be.
They're supposed to be there at the street to help him cover all the openings and make sure that it would have to have the, the address would be monitored so that only a contractor is, or someone along that line, only a contractor or someone along that line could actually come in and do it, usually with his, under his supervision.
So if I may, Attorney Hamer had said that even if we make the determination tonight, we still give time. Does it have to be 30 days, or can it be longer?
No, no, they, you have a large amount of discretion about what you order in these, in these orders. It's not unusual at all to give a property owner a period of time to restore a, a structure so it doesn't have to be torn down. And you can get very detailed in, in the timeline if you want to. You can say, "You've got 30 days to provide us copies of your contracts with your contractors, and then 30 days to get your permits in place, and then 60 more days to get the work done." Or, you know, providing that there's progress being made, then you can always extend that time period. So that you can, you can be as detailed as you want, and it's not at all unusual to start with trying to save the building before jumping to demolition.
Wondering if Tina, I don't know if you had some things to add here?
Just wanted to make one comment because I have worked with Lori regarding the situation. Right before Lori left, we had a discussion. We do think that they should have the chance to rebuild their home. Lori had mentioned to us that she just needed proof that the insurance was going to move forward with this. So she had requested that we had proof that the insurance was either going to pay to have this work completed, and also proof that the permitting was going forward. I do believe that was where she left off when she left, left the city. I do not know if that's been furnished, but I think if that, once that has, I think, to give them the opportunity to either rebuild the structure or let the insurance company give us a timeline on how long they think that it would take. But I just wanted to let you know that's where I. But I just wanted to let you know that's where I left off with Lori, trying to help them further keep their property.
Thank you.
I could add that I, my office hasn't received any of the proof that Lori asked for about the insurance, their willingness to pay for it or their ability. So that's why, effectively why we're here tonight is because we didn't receive that proof.
So it's my understanding then that if we make the determination tonight, then someone would work with the family on a timeline and all of that to ensure that things work forward and forward? I just don't want to...
Well, what I would suggest is this, is if you folks give me an idea of what you're looking for for an order, perhaps this matter could be postponed until the next meeting. I could prepare draft findings for you, including timelines, and then if that's acceptable, then you can issue the order at that time. That would give these folks a couple of extra weeks as well to begin having that conversation with code enforcement, submitting whatever documents they have, and that might put us in a better position to decide how to proceed.
And should we make that a public hearing? Is it necessary to make the next meeting a public hearing?
The statute doesn't require it to be a public hearing. What it requires is that the property owner have the opportunity to be present and have this discussion.
That's right, you said that.
Two thoughts, I like the direction this is going in. I think anything we can do to keep people in their homes or have the opportunity, we should do, also remembering what we heard from the neighbors about the issues it's causing for them in their homes. As we move forward, can we, you had talked about maybe having code enforcement describe some of the issues with the other structures around the house that had the fire, so that we are talking about the property, not the building, as being unsafe, so that as we move forward, recognizing the needs of the neighbors, that the rodents and the unsafe features that are not just the house are addressed as we're moving forward. So it's the house, but it's the other structures as well. Is it possible to, I would support us looking at whether or not that's possible, that it's the property, not just the building, so we're doing a comprehensive approach. And questions to the owners, I heard on the one hand, you have contractors ready to go, but then I heard you say, you know how it is with contractors, we don't know if we'll get them. So wait for the mic, I want to, everybody, and I'm concerned about what do you have signed on for contracted work?
It's not that we've signed on, what it is, I didn't say that, I said that up until now, we've had a problem with getting contractors that would not, that aren't fly-by-night and we're not going to go with those. We want somebody that has got a good reputation, somebody that you guys, the council and everything can go ahead and feel comfortable with as well as us, because we don't want to go ahead and just, you know, go in with chewing gum and duct tape. We would like to have it done the correct way.
So, I understand, what is it that you do have lined up that's happening this week?
We have a remediator, remediation.
Right, we have, come up soon, we have Bill Crawford Jr. come up to help us like seal off the building, that seems to be an important part. And the, there's a contract coordinator, Diana, like believes that she can send out, it looks like Acadia Construction might be out, like, you know, later this week to check it out. Like, it's, thanks for our motion, but we don't, we have Bill coming to seal it off, the rest is more up in the airs, the contract coordinator's trying to line up remediation, electricians, plumbers, roof residers.
So you have a contract coordinator who's working with you to line this out?
Yes. That's why we're very vague on this stuff because it's outside our ballpark.
I understand, I understand.
So we're working with...
Ryan Wells, I think is...
What I don't want is that we're in a position where, as we heard earlier this evening, we think we have a plan that will work for everyone, but then we find out that contractors are booked a year out and even if we have a plan in place, it's not going to work because of things beyond your reach. So I just, I want to be clear on where we are so that we can be helpful and not put you in an impossible situation some number of months down the road.
Right, and thank you for that, because like, as far as like estimating construction time, we don't know. We don't know.
I don't think contractors know.
Like, yeah, like, when she said six months, it was a guess, we don't know what it's going to take, we just know that we have like, people immediately helping on, like sealing it up, so, public safety issue. And then like, and we're working on remediation to get things cleared up, which seems to be where things would affect places outside of our property, like past and, so like, we're trying, that's what we're beelining for. As far as what it takes for construction to like make a place now, I don't know.
I think that's a really helpful clarification, I appreciate that. Our concern is that it no longer be an unsafe property. If you made it unsafe, but it took ten years to rebuild, so long as you're not impacting your neighbors, that's part of what we're trying to sort through here.
No, by the way, we are trying to beeline for that sealed...
Yeah, the immediate issue, yeah.
And then like, as far as like, oh, the floors are right or whatever, you know, I don't know. Like, unlike as far as like, safety, obviously, that's part of what we're beelining for.
Thank you.
To address your question very quickly, that certainly you could have the code enforcement officer testify to the condition of the outbuildings as well, so that there's a complete picture of what needs to be done on the property. The statute does allow the city to go in and unilaterally secure a building if necessary for, if there's an immediate threat to health and safety, where these folks have indicated that that's going to be done, I would suggest having them coordinate, like with the CEO, to make sure that that will be done within a set period of time.
Sorry, it's confusing, so I'm trying to come up with some plan, because I do think that all of us absolutely do not want you to lose your home and at the same time, of course, we have to balance the safety of the neighbors, so that's our main balance. So I think the idea about writing up a timeline and a plan is a good one, but I would want it to be, I'm sorry, no, I'm not really, I'm kind of rambling, but if this is doable, if it's actually financially and physically doable, then I would want us to make the concessions that are necessary. But if it actually is much as it is wanted, if it is not doable, I also wouldn't want to drag it out for six months, waiting to find out that it is not doable. And so you mentioned to Tina that what Lori was looking for was some kind of financial documentation that the insurance company is going to pay or something like that. So I would want to have whatever that documentation is, and I don't know all the ins and outs, Robert knows that, about how you show that the insurance will pay for this job that needs to be done before we meet back or when we meet back the next time, because to me, that would determine whether we're taking kind of a slower, longer-term, safe, but rebuild, or whether we just need to say, it can't work even if we wish it could work. Does that make sense?
Absolutely, yep. And that's, because we asked for, you know, that proof before, Lori did, and that's, it wasn't provided for, so that's how we ended up here, was to kind of bring it to a point. You know, one way or another, something has to happen. So whatever you decide to do, you know, I'll do whatever you want, but that's why we, Lori and I ultimately decided to do this before she left, was so that we could make this determination one way or the other and get something done, other than just leave it in limbo for who knows how long.
Can we make the determination tonight so that we can get the property safe? And then next meeting, after you've had time to work with them, outline the timeline? Or do we need to do everything at once?
I think you could split it up. If you want to find tonight that the building is a dangerous building pursuant to the statute, you can do that and then defer the action until next meeting and then I can prepare a plan for you folks. But it's really the same as if you postpone the whole thing.
And do that.
I don't know, it makes a difference.
It's no benefit in doing that.
I also thought we already did that. Are we sure we did not already do that? I thought we called it a dangerous building last time and this was the time to make a plan.
I think we approved moving forward with naming it, but we didn't actually name it. I think that's how it went last time, because I asked the same question.
Yeah, and there was a required timeline, which is why it's now...
There's a whole bunch of timelines that we've had to meet, right?
Further back than last month.
Yeah.
Can we do a partial action saying that within the next thirty days, we need to have that property secured as well as an exterminator in there to rid of the vermin, so, that's a person that I'd like to see.
And then the remaining timeline being next month, so that we can get something started for the neighbors.
So you're saying it would be like a motion to declare it a dangerous building? And what?
And give them thirty days to...
Secure.
To secure it.
And to get an exterminator in, to get rid of the vermin.
Can we allow for a valid contract that would take place, you know, in thirty days? Maybe they have a contract, somebody is busy, they're three weeks out, they're going to come in in three weeks, just a little bit of proof that it's going to happen soon, in thirty days, rather than have already happened.
So a motion that it is a dangerous, that we're declaring it a dangerous building and that within thirty days, there will be a contract for safety and extermination?
At a minimum, a contract.
To be completed within another period, maybe?
How about you do a motion to find that it's a dangerous building and that the first order of direction is that the structure be secured with an exterminator within thirty days and that if it's not so secured, that the city would go and take on that step itself. That way you will know it'll be secured within that thirty days. And then we can discuss the next calendar of events for remediation at the next meeting.
And you would work with Robert to do that?
I can, I'll prepare a draft order with timelines that can be filled in to say that, you know, there'd be a certain period of time for submitting proof of contracting and/or proof of financial ability and start a construction and then completion of construction and so forth. So we'll map out those individual deadlines, and if one of those deadlines is not met, then we can have a contract provision that falls back and says, if you don't meet these deadlines and there's not good prospect for it occurring in the near future, then there'll be an order to demolish, something like that.
Mr. Smith?
Two points, thank you, as we're building towards this. One is, again, I would love for us to be talking about the property and not just the building. If we exterminate the building, the rats go to the garage. So I think if we are able with what you had mentioned about having the code enforcement officer outline how the other structures are also dangerous, so it's a dangerous property, I feel comfortable giving the leeway that we need to. Second piece of this is I'm hearing that the insurance company has been non-responsive and has created part of the pinch point that we're in here. And I don't know if the city can and if it would be effective for the city to reach out to follow up on the outreach the property owners have done in order to reach, I guess, get an answer from them on what will be coming to help cover these costs.
My understanding was that Lori did that and that that is partly in here, that the insurance actually had paid out the money, but the bank captured it.
But it sounded, I remember that from here, but I thought that they were still working on trying to get the insurance settlement. If there is a loose end with the insurance, can and should the city, if we are, and using this motion that we're talking about as the impetus for reaching out to the insurance company?
I don't think we have the capacity and time to take on those complications. The council doesn't, maybe, maybe staff does, but I wouldn't think so.
Oh, you said, I don't have any comparable experiences for this, but I would hate for them. Insurance companies can be difficult and they want a priority.
How about we ask? (laughing). Give me the microphone again, thanks, Ari. Are you still waiting for a comment, Tony?
Where it was, is that there was a check that was sent out for fifty-seven, fifty-nine thousand dollars, and we were told that we had to sign it and then send it to the USDA in St. Louis, because they're the mortgage holders. Well, they would go down there and then it would disappear. So we got another one from the State Farm, sent it down as the State Farm and the USDA had required, requested, and nobody knows where it is.
Again, Sue.
So we haven't got a check from, so it's not, it's not as if we're trying to avoid the insurance, it's just...
Nope, that's, that's, so you got that check, is that paying the mortgage company what's owed or something? I mean, why is it like...
They have to do, they have to have the check, they have to sign it and then make it sent back.
Is there a lien holder?
There's a lien holder, I got it.
There's a lien holder and therefore, nobody knows where the checks ever disappeared to. It's like they're, put them to a black hole.
Yeah, okay, I got it.
Sue has some insurance expertise here.
Well, yeah, I was just, I didn't do anything.
I don't know what that was.
I was just going to say what they just told you, actually. Whenever there's a mortgage on a house, if there's a claim, it always has to go to the mortgage holder for their signature and then come back.
And then I could go ahead and then pay the contractor and it would never stick in my pocket, it would go directly toward the house.
And the other thing about claims like this is that it doesn't, they will give that first amount initially to help you get going, and then you have to put money in, you have to get the work going, get things started and submit bills to the insurance company. So there's not going to be one big check that they can use to give to contractors. The contractors are going to have to give them a bill and then they're going to have to submit it to the insurance company, so.
So has the insurance company, though, given you a value that they'll go up to? Because they...
They're going...
I'm sorry, and I, you know what, I don't want your financial information, I said that incomplete.
They're just going by a, what is it called, replacement, replacement or natural?
No, the guy that...
I think it's replacement, wasn't it?
It's, yeah, it's replacement value.
Oh.
Yeah, it's like it's just been lost. It should be good, but we can't do anything until they...
And the house is insured for four hundred thousand.
So with...
Try us again.
Sorry. It just likes her.
Yeah. So with replacement cost, they will pay to build this house new, brand, they will pay to get new, brand-new everything, then they're not going to just try and fix it. But what will happen is if they don't build back, they will pay based on the actual cash value of what the house was at the time of the loss. So that can be a big difference. I don't know the property and I don't know what the insurance company has it actually figured out for a value, but they will withhold, if they are building, they will withhold that, I think it's like twenty percent or something like that, until they get totally built and then they'll pay out that rest. But going forward, from that first check they got, they have to submit invoices after the work is done and get reimbursed, so that, some people have a hard time with that.
And I have got the building permits for up to two...
Sorry. $200,000?
Yeah.
You do?
I've already, I paid, I paid the city for it, yes.
When did you do that? You don't have that, do you?
I don't, I don't have them with me, no. I believe Lori did it, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, but she told me that she, we can't start anything until after she sent us the things that we could post during the thing.
She's waiting for the insurance.
Yeah. And we just haven't gotten anything.
You haven't received the.
No.
Permits from us?
No.
That's because Lori asked for proof that the insurance would actually be able to. So it's around, around and around and around.
Yeah. So if you don't mind, counsel, if we could, if we could just make, I can't make a, well, I'm not, I shouldn't make a motion. But I think that I've, my idea would be to, at this point, have the building secured and or the property secured and term, exterminate it, I'm sorry to say terminate, exterminate it in, and at least something in the next 30 days to do that. And then in August, instead of making these poor people talk about their finances and things.
Cash this out.
And in a public meeting, work with Robert on how to get the proof and be able to move forward with rehabilitating your building.
Okay, I'll try to make that motion.
Okay.
Unless he wants to make that motion.
No, I don't want to make that motion. I don't like motions. I just want to ask one question. It's been a year and a half, right? Approximately. And it seems like in a year and a half, it has just been stalled and you have, haven't been able to make any progress whatsoever. It appears from the outside looking in. Is that a fair assessment from?
Well, part of it has to do with the fact that, oh, gosh, no, I lost the whole thing just telling a lot. Yeah, anyway. Can you just ask the question?
I just, it's been a year and a half and it seems like you've been stalled. And what my thinking is before I heard this motion was, is there some, instead of going through all of this stuff about insurance and all that, could we, could we consider giving these people 90 days to show us progress before we go any further?
I think that's what we're doing.
That is what we're doing. We're just doing it increments because they are affecting the neighbors.
I agree. It's a terrible situation. But it's been a year and a half and I'm just wondering, in good faith effort, if we can give 90 days to get this show on the road because.
I have been in contact with some of the neighbors and no one's ever mentioned anything about vermin. So I was just wondering where that is.
And they also have.
It's a disaster.
I think, Steve, in some ways, it's implicit in this 90 days. We're going to do 30 days just on the safety of the building, securing it, some sort of extermination policy, and then we'll be revisiting this next month and that will be, you know, as we continue.
And hopefully with a plan to help you.
Right. We'll have Robert, Code, the teams here, work with the family, you know, work with obviously our legal counsel on next steps for the meeting to have all the background information, kind of a status report of where we're at and potential action options for the council to consider as we go to 30s, additional 36 days, the nine days platformed and the kind of the different steps that would need to show good faith that we're moving in a direction of further rehabilitating the building or that there's not enough evidence that this is going, moving in the right direction, to your point, Casey.
One further question. Are the taxes current on this building, this property?
It should be.
Heard that the report says the tax bill is paid in full through June 30, 2024. However, the city water bill is outstanding and there has been a lien placed on the property for the city sewer bill.
On the water bill, why is the water also coming up far and turned off for the entire cost?
So that is a question for the staff, that we can have them answer that tomorrow.
Do you have the answer to that?
I think we're getting a little into the weeds.
I think we're getting into the weeds, honestly. If we could just.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion and then hopefully people who know the things can explain them.
We'll have all that for the next.
You have it for the next meeting. Thank you.
So move to declare the property a dangerous property and move to, I don't know, insist that within 30 days, the property be secured and exterminated.
And that this will come back to the August meeting with the additional.
Do I have to make a motion for that?
That's part of your motion.
It's friendly.
And that we will resume this conversation at the August meeting with updated information about insurance and a proposed plan for moving forward.
We got the nod.
Anyone want to friendly amend that?
I think the only amendment I would add is dangerous pursuant to this, cite the statute.
Okay. Dangerous property pursuant to 17 MRS.
Subsection.
Swirly S 2851.
Got that, Abby?
Well done.
I didn't know what those swirly S.
And if you want to read an X-ray, because she can do that.
Section, subsection 2851. Section 2851.
I'll second, I'll second that motion with the swirly S.
It's two swirly S's.
Did you write that down, Abby?
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you very much for coming. Appreciate that. Okay, item 15, council order 072402, request of the wastewater superintendent to approve the expenditure of $322,324 for the materials and labor associated with the main DOT High Street paving project. The funding would come from the reallocated bond money from the 2023 general obligation bond.
It's a different amount, though, on the new thing.
So earlier in the meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, that's what the agenda says. So it's going to tell us.
So earlier in the meeting, I gave Michelle an updated version of this motion, which is basically the same, other than the dollar amount is changed slightly. It's a couple of thousand dollars higher. Oh, by the way, I'm Mike Harris, Public Works extra.
I think it's Mike Works.
Isn't it Mike Rowers? Is that what that is?
Yeah. Anyway, so we have the High Street DOT project coming up. It's a big project. The DOT is hoping to start in August. We don't have confirmation of that, so there's no update on that. I do have some information that the contractor would like to push it back, but the DOT doesn't want to push it back. So we'll see how that contest ends up. But in, in any event, as part of that contract, the city is required to fund labor within their contract for the contractor to adjust the manhole rims and covers that are in the street. So they will take them off while they're grinding, plate them. And then as they do the project, in the final project, they will replace the manholes and bring them to the proper grade of the pavement. They'll do the same thing for the water boxes. So we're required to fund that portion of the contract for the labor. And the contract came in at $2,900 a piece for the rims and covers and $950 a piece for the water valves and covers. So that's just the labor. And then we are required to supply the material. So for us, it would be, well, now for my whole department, it would be new manhole rims and covers where appropriate and also new water box gate valves where appropriate. And as a separate item in this particular motion, we have, Reggie has three insertion valves in the contracted area that have needed replacement. And so we'd like to do them as part of this contract. So that price is included in this, which also includes the labor for EJP to come down and put them in for us. And so the insertion valves will be outside of the DOT contract that we will be coordinating directly with the contractor on. And then everything else for labor would be within the contract. And then we would be supplying the rims and covers and we would be supplying the water gate boxes and covers for the project.
Didn't, we did something for Reggie last month on this, though, right? Did we?
No, we held it off till this, till this meeting.
We did hold it off to this one? Okay, I'm sorry.
We had a previous discussion with the re-obligation bond to, to take this money from that. That was probably two or three council meetings ago. So now we have the final.
They all just flow together now. Thank you, sorry.
So that's, therefore, I'm requesting that we be able to expend an amount of $330,962 to pay for the labor, the manhole rims and covers, the water gate boxes and covers, and for the three insertion valves that we need to replace and the labor to replace them. And it would be funded out of that. So originally, the, to refresh your memory, we had bond money put towards Water Street Pump Station to pay for a portion of that. And when this project came along, instead of borrowing money to pay for this project, because of monies that we received from the, from the DEP grant money, we were able to reallocate more grant money towards the Water Street Pump Station, pull the bond money out of the Water Street Pump Station and allocate it to the High Street DOT project. And so that's why we ended up here today.
And I'm assuming since Nate's not standing up, they're going, no way. He's, all of this is okay with the board. Okay, thanks.
Could you say that number again? 330,000?
It's on the.
330,962.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no problem.
It's on the subsheet. Okay. Gotcha.
Counsel? Did you have a question?
No.
Oh, motion. Oh, I was waiting for Casey, sorry.
She gets to do all of them. I wanted to do one.
As long as we keep it moving, then.
Yeah, exactly.
I move that Dale's Worth wastewater superintendent's request be approved from the city council to expend $330,962 for the materials and labor associated with the main DOT High Street paving project. The funding would come from the reallocated bond money from the 2023 general obligation bond.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The police chief, interim police chief, been waiting all night. Council order number 072403, request of the interim police chief to approve the purchase of body cruiser camera system from Motorola Solutions in the amount of $25,000 for the first year payment and to sign a five-year contract for service. The total five-year contract price being $249,009.35.
Yes. Hello, Troy B. Is interim police chief. So I think you got a memo earlier today, updated with all the information on it for the purchase of the cameras and the next, next item, which would be the tasers. So we've, if you, if you looked after this, the total is 249. Our first year obligation is 25,000. Has the description of, of the number of cameras, which is 20 total, 11 Cruises, two interview, 20 of the body cameras and 11 cruiser cameras and two recorders for the evidence for our interview rooms. And I will just add, Thursday night, we actually had another incident. We had a barricaded suspect, a trailer, threatened with a gun. Long story short, we were there for three or four hours, determined they didn't have a gun, was able to take care of the situation, but it's just another situation where if we had those cameras, they're just going to help us down the road. We didn't have cameras. We had audio again. But just seeing the increase in those types of incidents is where these cameras are going to come into play.
I should also note, it's in your memo, updated for Sean and Troy, but there is a grant opportunity for body cams as well. That Sean and Troy have done a great job of negotiating down the first year contract price to this 25,000 level. So if that grant were to come through, you know, that we'd replace. And then beyond the 25,000, they have already worked with Motorola that they'd essentially enter a new five-year cycle, send back potentially the equipment and then it would, going forward, it'd be on the grant. But waiting for that grant for even longer period of time, we could be many months, years, maybe it doesn't go through. And I, you know, highly advise, I think, especially previous budget councils, it seems like we consider maybe if you're doing ARPA or going to a future bond cycle, that the intent was to move forward as quickly as possible with the body cam and cruiser replacements. So we're doing so as cheaply as possible, knowing that there could be a grant in the future.
Move to approve the purchase of a body cruiser camera system for Motorola, Motorola Solutions in the amount of $25,000 for the first year and to sign a five-year contract for service. Do I have to say the five-year contract price is $249,009.35?
It's to be paid for out of the budget?
Yes.
To be paid for out of the budget?
Out of the budget. Second, the motion. Discussion?
Steve?
Is, could you just clarify for the public, is there absolutely nothing now in the Cruisers?
Oh, there is.
Audio.
What happens to that?
Those are outdated. There's no more, there's no parts for them.
That gets purged?
They got, yes.
And this is all, because, yeah, after so many years, they have nothing, right?
Yeah, they're outdated. New technology.
So there's no value to those?
No.
Okay.
It's not like.
Need further discussion? All those in favor? opposed, abstained? All right. I didn't see your hand go up.
Is my hand up?
Yeah.
Oh, no, I. Sorry. It was fast.
It's unanimous.
Unanimous.
Item 17, council order number 72404, request of the interim police chief to approve the purchase of tasers from Axon, Axon, in the amount of $19,360.45 for the first year payment and to sign a five-year contract for service. The total five-year contract price is $104,862.40.
Again, it's detailed in the recent memo. So the spart is to replace the entire less than lethal taser system that we have. There's no, the model that we have now longer is, is no longer in production. Very limited parts for if there is a problem. So the purchase of this would, we would own the tasers in five years. So this would cover the taser, the instruction, operating the new taser, the training cartridges and holsters that go along with them and includes a software to download and maintain for the next five years.
Any questions? Motion? She's looking at you, Casey.
Fine.
I got yelled at. That's kind of.
Fine. Move to approve the purchase of tasers from Axon in the amount of $19,360.45 for the first year payment and to sign a five-year contract for service. The total five-year contract price is $104,862.40.
Is this also from the budget? I don't see that memo.
This is also from the budget, yes.
From the budget.
Second. Any discussion?
Question. What happens to the old ones?
Um, Steve, don't take them back. There is a little bit of, little bit of.
Just, we got a little trade in price for them so that they can keep somebody going that might still have. There's still a few on the shelf, but they're not making them anymore.
Can that, that number is in this number?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Which one of you volunteered to be tased? Was it councillor lines or?
It was.
I feel like it was.
I just don't know if that's in the budget for a training cartridge.
Very certain I did not volunteer to be tased.
I hear these are, these are 10 prongs, too.
Did you hear? He said he'd do that one for free.
We haven't voted yet.
Do you charge?
Okay. Any further discussion? That was funny. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Patrick, Patrick, you should go. Sorry, it's getting my, I apologize.
Okay. Item 18, council order number 072405, discussion on the formation of an internal city working group. city working group to hold educational workshops on the opportunities and challenges related to Ellsworth opting in to allow cannabis businesses within certain areas of the city, sponsored by councillor Stein.
Apologies for the tongue twister of an agenda item. There were a lot of people involved in writing it, so we kinda just, it's an amalgamation of a lot of different ideas. But just to briefly talk through the, the broad scope, if you look at your agenda, I did my best to create this flow chart here. That's, somebody could have done a better visual job with, but you know, it works. So my thought was that this meeting, we create a working group, which would be an assignment of internal city people. This is board, commission, committee members and/or staff. So my thought and recommendation, after talking to a number of city staff and some other councillors, was that this be comprised of planning board members, city councillor, or multiple, an officer from the police force, city economic development officer, manager, and city planner. And there might be some other folks that we could suggest. The idea is that this committee be formed to, to look into opting in to adult use and medical cannabis usage in the city, to start to determine what would be the best way to design an ordinance, the best for Ellsworth, taking into account public hearings, businesses that are downtown now, or cannabis businesses that wish to move to Ellsworth, as well as nonprofits, people that work in healthcare, equity, downtown organizations, heart of Ellsworth, the Chamber of Commerce. Just hear from a lot of different people about what would we want this to practically look like. There's a lot of misinformation. There's a lot of, you know, worries that, that this could have a negative impact on the town, and I believe that could be true, but I think that if we think about this in the right way, design a really good ordinance, that this is a really beneficial opportunity. I think it should go to referendum in November. That's when we would have the most people voting. I think it should be an issue decided by, by the city and not by us. But I do think it's only fair to give the voters the full spectrum of information. I don't want people to show up to the ballot and say, well, if we vote for this, there's gonna be pot shops on every corner. No, we want people to know that this working group has met several times, has hosted public hearings, has published articles in the Ellsworth American, basically saying, here's our recommendation to the planning office about what we think this ordinance should look like, so that when people show up at the ballot, they know when they're voting, the, the practical outcomes of, of that vote, if we do decide to opt in.
I also just know, I know, so you're looking around this packet. It's not in here. It's in the, the council packets. And then there's also, I just emailed you John's timeline as well, just in case you.
Y'all looking at the flow chart? I spend a lot of time.
Yeah.
I thought it was really great.
With the little lines that connect the boxes.
I also included, for those of you who were here last year, we hosted the OCP, Office of Cannabis Policy of Maine, to come in to give some information. It is a little complicated. There's this whole flow chart of, you got cannabis, there's either medical use or adult use of medical, there are registrants, there are patients of registrants, there are dispensaries and caregivers. So it goes on and on and on. There are areas where we can create ordinances to change. We can, you know, really specifically zone things. We can have businesses come in exactly where we want them. You know, Charlie suggested that that could bring either vacant properties or land up to as best as highest use. That would bring in additional tax money. We get to set permitting fees however we want. That way we get to, you know, harvest a little bit of the funds that are coming in, potentially from tourists during the summer. There are areas that we can't change. You know, we're not allowed to allow establishments within 500 feet of schools, for example. So even before getting into what the ordinance could look like, there are these safety issues built in at the state level. So this committee would meet, we would gather information, we would share the information with the citizens so that they actually know, you know, practically what's, what this would look like.
I, I very much appreciate this, the ability to be able to do this. And I think the worst thing that we could do for the people in Ellsworth is just to put a simple, do you approve of commercial sales of marijuana in the city of Ellsworth? It's too broad. It causes concerns. And if we have kind of an idea of what the intent is with this and be able to provide that, I think it's, it's easier and a more informed decision right from the ballot for the people that don't have, or aren't used to, you know, doing the research on these types of things. If it's in that little sentence, a little bit of a clarification, I think it helps a lot. So I appreciate this. Councillor Lyons?
And I, and I also appreciate the proposal, John, to put this to referendum vote. You know, the council technically could pass it ourselves, but I think an issue, you know, a lot of people have strong opinions, one way or the other. And so this is a great opportunity to allow the people of Ellsworth to, to speak and hopefully, and then, but if we do our job right, they will have, be able to make an informed decision when they vote. So I think, I really like your flow chart. It makes sense to me.
It's an Excel.
It's like Microsoft Paint or something.
Yeah, so I think it's a very thoughtful way to go about it, and we'll get, you know, it will allow for public comment. And, and then at the end of the day, the voters of Ellsworth get to pick how we proceed.
Councillor Stein?
Thank you. Agreeing with all of the conversations so far. And am I understanding correctly in this beautiful flow chart, that by the time of the vote in November, the draft ordinance would be publicly available? So that it's not like theoretically, this is what we would do in the future, but we can say, if you pass this, this is what the ordinance will look like, so that there is that certainty on what people are voting on.
My hope is that the recommendations will be published. I had a conversation, maybe Matt could speak more on that. We, we can't really vote to, or potentially we could vote to enforce Matt to adopt these recommendations, but I don't think that's the way we're gonna go down some of the other.
Working group would just kind of collect information and do a lot of the legwork for the planning board, and then the council, you know, if it goes referendum and the community votes that they do want to move forward, I'd probably recommend that the council put a moratorium in place for six months to get those ordinances drafted, and then go through the planning board process, and then come back to you once they're finalized. I would find it very hard to think that I would be able to get all of this drafted by November.
Which is, okay, so I still want to be clear on how much of the framework we are able to provide to voters on this is what it would look like, because the.
What I would like, what I would like to see is at least general broad strokes of there would be between this, this number and this number of allowable permits. They would be generally in these zones, and we would look for a range of this kind of permitting fees, so that the businesses looking to move in would sort of know what they're getting into, but also people that live in these different neighborhoods would know that this is most likely not gonna go right in this.
So there would be like bullet points on what the intentions are with an ordinance and everyone's in agreement with it?
Maybe like some goals, maybe that the committee or the working group is suggesting to the planning board and council as they review these things, like here's what we've learned talking to the community, what they're looking for, what they think would be acceptable. And the planning board can work to incorporate that into an actual ordinance. But again, the working group wouldn't have any authority to.
Right.
Demand that. But it's just like, here are the recommendations from our group, the work that's been done, and from the community through that work. And the planning board would probably respect that, look to incorporate that.
And just update for you, John, which I know we talked about before. I talked to Tina about timelines. The, looks like we can make this, the vote on going to referendum for the August meeting because of the printing deadlines. There's actually a chance that we actually might have had to have this on August 17th, but the state can accept post the 19th meeting, probably the 20th. So we can, we won't have to schedule extra meetings, despite your hope that we would do so, Steve.
I've been counting them.
So that's kind of, the timeline still holds here.
That's great news. I've heard it mentioned as well, that, I mean, the staff has already put in some time. We've had some meetings. There'll be additional meetings, but the Office of Cannabis Policy estimates somewhere between $10,000 and $20,000 of staffing time and research time that the city needs to spend moving forward with something like this. They reimburse up to $20,000 for the city's efforts. So in theory, if we're lucky, and I think most municipalities do get it, this wouldn't actually cost the city anything to send to referendum, to vote a yes. I don't know.
They would get reimbursed for it.
We don't get reimbursed if it's a no vote.
If it's a no vote, then yeah, I don't think they reimburse us.
So it's a gamble.
I would trust it.
Just to have, I think we've heard this before, but refresh my memory. The closest communities that have already done this, I think we've heard this before, but could you say it again? Do you know?
Oh, I don't have a full list, but I mean, there's several surrounding, or that, I actually don't know about recreation. I think Surrey did. Patrick, I think you helped them do that.
Southwest Harbor.
Southwest Harbor.
Southwest Harbor, Franklin has medical businesses.
Yes, Trenton has medical businesses, right.
Yeah.
But not recreation, I think.
Pop up to Bangor.
So it's all around us.
It's all around.
And Bucksport, right?
And Bucksport, yeah. Yeah, so, I mean, I've, so yeah, I've done work with, you know, municipalities near here and throughout the state. And yeah, you're seeing it more and more. It's just, I mean, that's also how this was intended, when they, they changed the law in 2019 from opt-out to opt-in. So before, as a municipality had to say, no, we don't want it. They changed it to say, the only way a municipality would have these businesses is to say yes affirmatively. So, but that's what you're seeing is a lot of, more and more communities are opting in. And so to me, it seems like a good time to let the folks of Ellsworth decide whether or not they want to.
It's a great time of this election, because it's.
You get good turnout.
Yeah, a great turnout.
So move to form an internal city working group to hold educational workshops on opportunities and challenges related to Ellsworth opting in to allow cannabis businesses within certain areas of the city.
So we only had discussion. We didn't have any action.
It's not like a formal committee, so you didn't have to take options.
Oh, I didn't have to do any of that.
You did not.
But I appreciate it.
But are there, are there councillors that would like to be on the committee? And we had also talked about bringing, bringing the working group or committee to the council to have the final discussion before.
The election?
What's it?
Before the election.
Before the election, yes. So the, the council, councillors who aren't on this working group can also have their input. If you missed the other public hearings, you can still say this is what I want for the recommendations to look like as well.
I'm happy to serve on the committee, considering I've got experience with this, and that'd be great.
Any further discussion?
We'll end on a high note.
You've been saving that one.
The management pre-meeting.
Well, you know where we're gonna cite them is on High Street.
Move to adjourn. Okay, item number 19, adjournment.
I should do adjourn.
All right, all those in favor? We are adjourned.